Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. It's the Marion City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 16th. It's work session, not the meeting, sorry. Uh, first on the agenda is Steve Cooper. Presentation on the Stormwater Master Plan. Welcome, Steve.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you said, I'm Steve Cooper, Marion's Stormwater Coordinator, giving you an update on the Stormwater Master Plan, although I will not be actually giving you the update. I'm just going to be pressing the buttons. Steph, then Vane Hoagie from HDR, she's the project manager on this project. She's with us virtually. So Steph, please take it over and I will, uh, thumb through the slides for you.
All right. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. All right. Thanks, Steve. You can, uh, click through this. So yeah, our goal for today is to give you an update particularly on the detention basin condition assessment. Uh, we talked a little bit about it at the July uh, meeting and what our plan was. And so we're kind of going over what we've been working on the last couple of months. You can step forward, Steve. Uh, before we kind of get into that though, I did want to remind you all that Rachel sent an email on September 5th, uh, asking for uh, your input on our stormwater criteria survey. So we're looking for council's guidance on the complex solution areas. Uh, Steve, if you step forward, so the, there's four primary complex areas in the city where we need your guidance on what types of projects we should be evaluating for these areas. Uh, so I'm not planning on going into a lot of detail on it today. I think we provided a pretty detailed summary in our email, uh, but we would like you all to review the stormwater criteria and then complete that ranking survey. Uh, if there are questions, I'm happy, happy to answer them. Uh, but this is just kind of your reminder to complete that survey. I think we've had four responses so far and we would like, uh, everyone's responses by September 23rd if possible. So you can step forward, Steve. This again is, is that criteria that we're looking to rank and can go over questions if, if there are any. Um, so our detention basin condition update, you can step forward, Steve. So at, at the July meeting, we talked about what the objectives of this, uh, assessment are. They were to evaluate the city-owned detention basins and then provide recommendations for improvements or retrofits at certain detention basins to meet current design standards. So the city owns and maintains about 60 detention basins and we worked with city staff to identify the top 10 priority or the tier one detention basins that, you know, based on complaints and model results and staff knowledge, which ones are most likely not meeting standards. So those top 10 are kind of shown in the, the purple circles there. Those are the ones that we went out on August 31st and we completed a field inspection of. Steve, if you want to step forward. Uh, the text on this slide might be pretty small. You might not be able to read it, but this just shows an example of what we use to, uh, out in the field to identify where there might be issues in the detention basin. So there's six main categories that we look at. Um, and then this will all be, these documents along with pictures are all being summarized in a final report, uh, along with our recommendations. So you'll be able to see kind of this more clearly in our, in our final report, but I'll go through the, the categories that we looked at quick. Steve, if you want to step forward. The first one, we looked at the inlets. So this is kind of the, the primary way for flow to get into a detention basin. It's most often storm sewers coming into basins, but can be the overland flow from roads, uh, or private properties getting into the basin. For this, we looked at whether or not the, the inlet points were being obstructed by debris or sedimentation. We also looked to see it, the, if they were in need of repair or if there was vegetation growth, uh, surrounding them. Second category we looked at was the main storage area. Um, so this is where the water ponds in the detention basin. Here we were looking at primarily sedimentation and debris buildup, but also if there are areas where there is erosion and undercutting and then potentially any unwanted vegetation or overgrowth of vegetation that could impact, uh, the capacity of the basin. Next slide. The third one that we looked at would be the embankment. This is the area surrounding the detention basin. Here again, we're looking to see if there's any, uh, unwanted vegetation growth, if it's overgrown. Um, we're also looking, a lot of times this is where animals will burrow, which can cause stability issues. Um, and then potential seepage could cause failure. So we're looking for those, uh, things. And then, uh, the last one or second to last one, we're looking at the, the outlet structure. So we consider this the primary outlet. This is the way for, uh, water to leave the basin first. So it's typically through a storm sewer pipe. Here we're looking to see if it is obstructed with sediment or debris that would prevent flow from leaving the detention basin. Also looking to make sure that it's not failing, the concrete and everything is structurally sound, um, and then potentially any erosion around it. Uh, you can step forward, Steve. Then the fifth category is the auxiliary spillway or the secondary, uh, way for flow to, to leave a basin. This is located somewhere along the embankment if it is present. Um, and this is just the place where when flow fills, the detention basin is full, where does flow leave the detention basin? So here we noted whether or not an auxiliary spillway was, was present. And then we also looked at again, if there's unwanted vegetation, if there is obstruction that would prevent flow from leaving the basin and then any eroded areas. Uh, the last category, the sixth one was just kind of miscellaneous where we noted if the access was restricted or if, um, there are, you know, fences or, or other things that, that might be, uh, present that, that should not be. Uh, you can step forward, Steve. Uh, so to summarize all of the different criteria that we looked at for the 10 detention basins, we simplified it down into, to three categories. Uh, so we were looking at, you know, the first one would be if it was outstanding. We didn't identify any, any maintenance needs appears to be operating and, uh, the condition of it is good. The second category would be considered satisfactory. Right now it's, it's operating in the way that it should be, but preventative maintenance would be needed kind of in the mid to long term, uh, to keep it operating as it should be to help improve, uh, performance and function. Then the last category, needs improvements. This is the detention basins that we identified need more near-term semi, uh, short-term maintenance. Uh, these areas we identified as there's a potential risk of damage or failure or unintended consequences. Um, so you can kind of see the different range here. There's three main detention basins that's, that stand out that we noted several, uh, maintenance needs. Prairie Ridge number one, Taube Park, and then English Glen number one. And those are mostly related to the embankment and auxiliary spillway and, and, uh, the principal spillway outlet structure. Um, if you want to step forward, Steve. So here's a couple of photos from each of these three primary basins. So English Glen, there is some significant veg- vegetation growth on that spillway. So this could impact flow leaving the detention basin, which could then back up and, and cause impacts on private property. We also noted a blocked inlet. So there was about a foot of ponding here that, that should not have been, been here at this time. Uh, the inlet was blocked. So flow could not leave the detention basin. Uh, Taube Park, we noted, we actually met maintenance staff out here working on this. Uh, when we were out there, there's a clogged outlet that was causing water to back up all the way to the inlet. Maintenance staff did note that this is one that they routinely have to go out to, um, to improve those conditions. And then Prairie Ridge number one, we identified some pretty significant sedimentation at the outlet. Again, that would prevent flow from leaving the detention basin and then also some vegetation and debris blocking the inlets. So we, we've passed all this information on to city staff already. We kind of have a, an action plan in place with what, what some recommendations, uh, might be. Uh, and then we're, you know, it's all going to be documented in, in a final report. Um, what the near term and then the mid and long-term, uh, maintenance needs would be. And that's what I have for today. If there's any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Steve, could you guys go over your definition of the 10 you looked at? So did you say that these are the 10 you anticipated would be the worst ones? And so the other 50 you would assume would be in better shape or they're smaller? Or how did, why, how did you pick these 10 to, uh, do the inspection for?
Uh, there's a lot of new ones that obviously didn't need to be looked at. These were just kind of, the, these were upstream of areas that could have, something downstream could be problematic if they were to fail. Um, just several criteria like that. Steph, do you want to kind of jump in and talk about that as well?
Yeah. So yeah, we had several criteria that we looked at. The age of, of them was one, whether or not there is a human risk factor if they were to fail. Uh, we also compared, uh, the modeling results that we talked about last time. So if our model is showing that it's not meeting current, that design standards, um, then it got added to the list. Um, those were the primary categories that we looked at. Uh, and if it, if it met those categories, it got moved up onto the tiers. And then yeah, the, it really, really was the top 10 kind of just pulled themselves out. After 10, you know, there didn't seem to be that it was gonna not meet current design standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Steve, um, in conducting this project to identify, uh, these higher, uh, priority problem areas, did that also identify some, what I would say, uh, maintenance work to be done on an accelerated basis, not to create a future problem? In other words, did the inspection inform us of something that we need to do now?
Yes, and a lot of that we already kind of know. Actually, Justin, our sewer maintenance manager, met the inspection staff at Talby Park kind of accidentally for this and said, oh yeah, we, we know that this is what's going on.
Okay.
So, uh, the answer is yes, it identified things. It also is, we already know about some of it. And then also coming down the line, we have a, uh, operations and maintenance part of this project that will identify a lot of that as well and, and give us more detail.
Okay.
All right. Steph, do you want to say something to that in addition?
I, excuse me, I, I think you hit it, Steve. I don't have anything else.
Good. Thanks.
Anyone else? So is there anything needed from us?
Uh, the three who have yet to complete the, the feedback, please give us your feedback. We'd love to have that so that we know what the priorities are and, uh, we're looking forward to that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a update on bell tower lofts.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Tonight we have Daryl High and Brian Cook and, um, uh, Martin Gardner is here with us as well. Sorry. Um, and really just taking an opportunity to highlight the project. This has certainly been a very high-profile project. A lot of time and effort has been, uh, put into this project to get us to, to get everyone to this point. Uh, this project has been facing, um, some opportunities and challenges along the way. So we wanted to be able to share what those opportunities and challenges have been, just to keep you up, up to speed with what, how the project's going and, um, any changes that might be made throughout this, throughout this process. So Daryl, hand it over to you.
Mayor, members, council. Is it just this one?
Sure. There you go.
There you go. So we thought we'd give you just a kind of a brief update of, um, where we started and where we are today, and then we'll answer any questions that you, that you have. So this is right when we got started. I think most of you have seen the inside of the church. These are just some pictures that were taken. Um, the upper left, uh, was on top of the bell tower. I don't know that many of you, including us, saw that in the very beginning, uh, but there was quite a bit of damage from the Dratcho. The lower right is obviously, um, lower two rights is the bell tower and then the bell embedded in the, in the, uh, in the basement when it fell. Here's kind of the original timeline, um, on the project. Um, there was a kind of a preliminary timeline before this, uh, and I think Conlon and the city, and then we got involved. Um, but in fall of 2022 is when we made the CDBG application for the original church building and we were successful in obtaining those, those funds. Work commenced in August of, uh, 2024. So, um, and maybe I want to hit on one thing, um, and guys, you jump into, uh, you know, the, the council saw a couple of different renderings. I think even before I got involved, there was maybe a rendering that might've shown up, maybe a bar or a brewery, um, that was drawn. And then there was also a, a five-story building with an underground parking that what, at one point was in the, um, area where the, uh, Sunday School wing is now. Um, so, so those were kind of conceptual plans that kind of came and went mainly financially, especially the five-story building because a lot, it didn't end up, didn't end up working. So we applied for the CDBG application with the church, uh, then we were able to actually end up increasing the number of units to 55 units of the project that you all saw on the development agreement and what was, was finally approved with your support. Um, here is a kind of an updated, uh, rendering. Um, and I've got the two smarter guys that can talk about the construction, uh, materials and so forth, because I think that might be, but I do want to touch on that, the, the lower area with the kind of the lattice and the plants. That's a, that's a garden, um, a pa- a fire pit patio garden that we're, that we've added to the site. We can come back to this in a minute. Um, here's a more of up to date. This was a couple of weeks ago, uh, Director Durham visited the site, um, with a, a large contingent of folks, um, the framing. We're on a call with IEDA earlier today, um, and Dallas informed us that the framing is about 95% complete. So, uh, if you were to go over there today, which you're welcome to at any time, if you'd like to schedule a walkthrough, we'd be happy to have you. Um, but they're running mechanicals and getting ready to start, start the drywall. So now, now and for us, it's kind of a, a little bit of work in the dark when you're seeing these, these prints, these, these designs, you know, you go into the building and now you can really start to see the, what the units are going to look like and where people are gonna, are gonna live. So estimated completion date is March of 2026. Uh, we're estimating the lease up to take 60 to 90 days. So hopefully by summer of 2026, we'll have 55 new families living in Uptown. So I think that's, yeah. So with that, I have, have to answer any, any questions.
Questions? Steve?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so at the beginning of the summer, your project certainly got a lot of visibility and a lot of discussion with the porta potty at the top of the bell tower. Yeah. And first time I, it took me a few times to drive by and look up and I go, boy, no son, those poor guys that have to stand there all day long and don't get to come down. But anyway, I'm just saying, that got a lot of us, a lot of visibility and a lot of discussion about your project. So.
The first weekend it was up there, if you ever remember, it was extremely windy.
Yeah.
And I made a phone call that Saturday. I'm like, hey, just making sure this is strapped down, right? So yeah, he said it was.
Yeah.
So.
We, we couldn't be more happy than we are with Seedorf and Conlon on the work that they've done to maintain that church. Um, I, I think we're really blessed to have probably the top masonry contractor in the country only be, uh, you know, 50 miles from here. And they've done a fantastic job of, uh, putting that thing back together because it needed a lot of work. And then so have Conlon and the framing contractors. It, 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 it just, you know, we knew it was old, right? And we knew it was damaged. We, we maybe didn't know it was quite as damaged as, as it was, but.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't framing just a rectangular box, if you will. If you go in there and look at the, some of you have been in there on the tour when, when Director Durham was there, it is, there's a lot of intricacies there that you're kind of framing on the fly, if you will. And so, uh, it's, it's unique for sure. And we're, we're blessed to have some, some good contractors working on it. Yeah.
Great. Yeah, just two questions, well, fronted by a comment. I, I'm astounded at the work that's been going on. I mean, I was, actually I was kind of pleased to see the crane out there when the aerial work was being done because that suggested there's serious project going on, kind of a signal to the entire community. Um, so two questions. So the framing is, you said 90% complete, something like, on that order?
More than that.
And, and so plumbing work and electrical and all of that follows HVAC, whatever is necessary. Um, do you have any principal risks that are keeping you up at night?
I, I mean, I think the risks are compounded on a, on a project like this that you, you just get into cost overruns that you just didn't have any way to know.
Sure.
Um, cause so much of it was covered up. So, uh, you know, that, that's, that's the risk. The, the interest rates have come down a little bit on the 10-year treasury, which is the, the takeout module. That's, that's the factor that we'll use to do the takeout financing for it and pay our neighbors, no pun intended, the neighbors across the street, their money. Um, and, uh, but, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be tight. It was always gonna be tight. I mean, if, if I've gotten one called, and I'm sure these guys probably can convince this too. If I've gotten one call, I've gotten a hundred from around the state to come look at their churches or their old buildings and, and the answer's been, I'll respectfully decline. This will be the last one for old DH.
Okay. All right. So the second question, uh, continuing on, uh, with, uh, from Steve's theme, I want to know, how did you get DoorDash up to the roof for those guys?
We need Dan, we need our superintendent to answer that one. That's, that's news to me, actually. I didn't know that.
Okay, thanks.
I don't have any, uh, top of the roof questions like these two, but, um, wondering, remind me, what, what is the square footage of the units on these? Like what's the range or the average of the square footage?
The range, so we have a, a minimum of several units are 450 square feet, which is, which is the, actually the minimum for the rules of the grant. Uh, and then I believe there's some, there's a couple that are maybe up 1,200, 1,300 square feet because they have a lofted bedroom space and they're, they're extra, extra deep.
And then you mentioned a little bit on the, the new rendering, the little public garden fire pit area. So I was kind of wondering, like what are the, since we've seen just multiple renderings of this, I'm just trying to refresh my mind. What are some of the other like community spaces that the tenants have outside of their, their dwelling?
I don't know. Do we have a shot?
Oh, do we do?
So when they come in, there's a large fitness area, uh, and there'll be some seating around that. There's an, there's a property manager's office and then there's the exterior space that those are, those would be the three. And there, there will be some storage, um, fence. We, they're like the dog kennel fences for storage in, in the lower level of, of the building. So.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious. I just remember we went through, like you mentioned multiple renderings. I remember at one point, I don't remember if there was, there was that rooftop outdoor space at one point. So I was like, where are we at today? So thank you for that reminder.
Yeah.
So where will the bell be displayed?
So, um, I don't know that we firmly decided on that. Um, we've had a couple of ideas. I think the one that has maybe a little traction at our office is to permanently, um, maybe get our, our masons to build us a wishing well. We'd love to have it so that the kids could, could see it and, uh, and maybe have it off the walkway. So when they come down through there, they could see it and they could read about it and, and so forth. The, the other idea was to put it in the building. The only challenge of putting it in the building is the only people in the building would really get close enough to see it. It's worth seeing. The date's on the bell. It's, it's definitely worth, well, you, you've seen it, you've touched it. I mean, you've heard it. Um, you know, I, I mean, in the perfect world, we figure out a way to get it to ring, but I, but I think that the idea of getting the children to see it would be, would be kind of what's got a little traction.
Did you say there will be, did you say there'll be a property manager onsite?
There, there's, there will be some time, not full-time, not full-time for 55 units, but, uh, generally what we have is property managers that go from place to place because we still do show our units in person. So, yeah, I mean, yeah. And, and, and that gives the opportunity, um, you know, the other example would be there's an office, uh, on River View over on Edgewood Glass, but that person's not there, you know, all, all day, every day. So.
Is the main entrance secured?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. 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 And one of the things that really, uh, and these guys did a great job. We didn't really know how this was going to be. If you look where those balconies are, um, or we, we took away a few balconies so that we could allow for some more natural light to get into that lower level because that was a concern from the, kind of the get-go. Um, they've done a really good job. It's going to turn out really nice. And even though the units are a little smaller, um, you know, I, I think they're going to fill up. Every time it's on the news, people call us. Um, we haven't started awaiting this yet. We want to wait until we're a little closer to the delivery. Um, and there's some grant requirements on Dratcho impacted citizens that have to have the first run at it. So we'll, we'll be in that, um, part of the lease up first, uh, and then we'll open it to the general.
Well, there's definitely, um, still a lot of excitement in the community about just the, the, just saving the building, uh, you know, as an asset for the community. So, uh, yeah.
So could you remind us how many units are, uh, eligible or will be used for low-income housing?
Yeah. So there's, there's 55 units and the grant requires 51% of it. So 28, 28 units will be incomers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, if, Mayor, if I could, on the exterior, you kind of have that shaded glass look. Could you kind of describe this material that gives that glass impression and what that will look like and how you install it?
Yeah, I actually have a sample here. It's a polycarbonate, which in the old days you would have seen on like ag buildings and things like that, but they've modernized it and they've made it UV stable. Uh, so it's translucent and this is, this is actually thicker than the actual product that we'll use, but the, the effect is basically the same. And so as, as part of the kind of making the final design for that part of the building, we were impacting the structure a lot with how we had it rendered out previously. We're removing a lot of the wall, adding in a lot of steel and it was, there was a lot of expense there. And so we still wanted to maintain that translucency, that kind of glowing box, that modern, real modern feel on this side of the building. And so by reducing the very large openings to a little bit smaller, we don't have to impact the structure nearly as much. And then this, because it's translucent, kind of masks those punched openings and the existing material behind. So at night it'll still glow out through those windows and this will kind of help the light, uh, permeate down through the material, uh, for that glowing effect. And then during the day, it still has that sleek, sleek, modern look.
There's different types of transparency too that we're looking at.
Yeah. Yep. Different, different colors. There's different shades of opal and white and things like that.
Steve, one more quick question. So I'm looking at the pictures. This is the first time I think I recall seeing any balconies.
Yeah.
On this project. Are there some balconies on the south side of this building also? So how many are on the south side roughly?
Uh, similar to this side, I think it's five. Let's see, one, two, three. There's three on this side. There'd be six on the south side.
And I'm assuming the larger, some of the larger apartments you're talking about are in the old building and.
You saw some of those ones too.
Yeah. Yeah. So those, that's where some of the, yeah. In the sanctuary area? Or that's where you got some of the, the? And the lobster, yeah.
Some of those nicer, real focal units are when you.
Right.
Ones with the stained glass.
And you get, you have, you get the stained glass with that. Yeah, that's going to be pretty cool. Right?
That was something that Director Durham was really complimentary about, just the reuse of a church and being able to do something like this where, where we're restoring that. I will say everybody's kind of, there's a big anticipation about that stained glass. When's that going back? And just talked to our superintendent about today, we're framing that up, framing this, these, reframe these up next month in October, but the stained glass won't come back until the end, just to protect it as far as that goes. So unfortunately, we'll just, we'll hang on to that until the end. So it'd be cool if it went up earlier than that, just to see the finished product, but yeah.
Anything else? Thanks for the update.
Okay, got it.
Great work. Thank you. Next up is, uh, Rachel with the discussion on, uh, chapter 242 of the code.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Back in July, at the council meeting, July first, Councilmember Harper requested a review of our code regarding solicitors. So city staff reviewed the city code and pulled our comparable communities to see if any amendments should be made. I did want to mention a few of the requirements that are within our code now, shown on the screen here. So license holders are required to provide a copy of their license if requested. They shall leave private property when requested and shall obey any signage relating to no solicitors. We do plan to add this language to the license form, just as a reminder to solicitors. Here are the hours of our comparables. Currently in Marion, it states that solicitors can operate any day of the year from eight AM to nine PM. To summarize information on the screen, Marion has one of the later end times of our comparables. We match Bettendorf, but they limit their days to Monday through Saturday. And then Monday through Saturday is common with many of the comparable communities. So staff is recommending to be consistent with the others in the metro area. So that would change our times from eight AM to eight PM. We would recommend excluding the national holidays and then would be open to also excluding Sundays. So I'll open it up and see if there's any feedback.
So are you looking for?
If there's direction.
Feedback and direction tonight. Okay.
Or if you need time, we can.
Sure.
Push it out.
Yeah, is it? What's the kind of, is there an urgency on this or just, yeah? Anybody have any thoughts? Go ahead, Steve.
You know, I I I didn't know what our rules were until I saw this. And I think having a day off is good. So I think the the recommended changes, I would certainly support those changes.
Excluding Sunday as well.
Yes, absolutely.
And is, remind me, is that consistent with the rest of the metro?
So we would be different in the metro. They have all days of the week.
Okay.
So we would be different in that aspect.
I don't know. There's just some, on something like this, there's some value to being consistent with the metro. People are, you know, in the in the metro area. But I I guess I don't have any strong feelings on it, but. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Rachel, recap what the proposal is again.
So changing the times from eight AM to eight PM, excluding the national and state holidays. And then if council is in support, we would exclude Sunday. So it would be eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Saturday, and then excluding holidays.
Okay. Well, I I favor the maximum proposal that would exclude Sundays. But I'm also not stuck on that at all. But I think that's a desirable feature in order just to provide some privacy and personal time for our residents.
Anyone else? No strong feelings? Yeah, I'm not extremely passionate one way or the other on this one. But I would say, I think, logistically, it makes sense to be aligned probably with with Cedar Rapids. High Wath is a little bit different. They don't exclude the designated holidays. But yeah, my preference would be just aligning to exactly what Cedar Rapids does on this one.
I'd agree with Gage. I think just align with Cedar Rapids.
We can write the ordinance to match Cedar Rapids, and if there's a change when that comes forward, we can adjust it then or discuss it then. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks, Rachel.
You.
Next up is Kim on sidewalk gaps.
Good evening again. We're really excited to be able to start presenting the conversation we've had on sidewalk gaps, whether that be throughout the whole community or that with our our school system, Safe Routes to School. I'm gonna, I think you've met Rachel before, so I'm gonna reintroduce her, Rachel Murtagh. And Emily Houston from NSA has really been the the movers on this part of the project. I do wanna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start out just giving you some information, and then she's gonna go through the details with you. At the end, we do, we would like to see if you're in line with some of the things, if your thought process is in line with some of the things that we've worked through with our Safe Routes to Group, Safe Routes to School group. That committee, because of, there's a lot of sidewalks for us to tackle. We decided to focus first on the Safe Routes to School portion. So Rachel and Emily worked with those Safe Routes to School documents from both Marion Independent and Lynnmar as well. The Safe Routes Committee themselves is made up of MPO staff, our SO, SRO, Marion Independent and Lynnmar superintendents, along with their transportation people, and then us, and then us as staff. So we've got, we got a lot of feedback from them. We've meant a couple of times with a lot of the detail that Rachel is gonna share. And she'll walk us through that. But just wanted to give you kind of an overall is where where we started, what we decided to focus first, and then how are we breaking that down? This then will help us once we kind of make the decision on priorities and next steps. And that will help us then begin to integrate those those requests in the CIP. Okay, all right. Rachel, all yours.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, Mayor. So you counsel, I am pleased to present the results of our collaboration with the Safe Routes to School Committee, the goal of which is to really help prioritize continuing to fill in the gaps that we have in our sidewalk system, really focusing on areas around schools to help reduce the risk to those young pedestrians. I initially started with the full sidewalk gap layer that Dave Hockett developed. It's now currently hosted with our engineering department. I did kind of want to go through how we categorized our sidewalks, because the definitions do differ slightly than what engineering uses. So I didn't want there to be any confusion. We wanted to prioritize the least walkable streets first. So we considered a sidewalk to be complete if at least one side of that street had a full sidewalk, and then it connected to another sidewalk to continue that path. We then looked at disconnected sidewalks. That's basically where that side of the street has a full sidewalk, but it doesn't go anywhere. The pedestrian has to either cross the street, go into the street, or through grass to reach another sidewalk. Incomplete sidewalks were, as you can see there, streets that had some sidewalks in front of properties. But again, the pedestrian has to either go into the street, cross the street, or go through grass to reach another section. And then we had areas that are fully absent, where there is no sidewalk at all to connect to. We continued to narrow down those sidewalk priorities by looking at the walkable areas around the schools that are designated in the Safe Routes to School documents. This is an example here. You can see the walking zone, which is half a mile for Francis Marion and Vernon. In performing these network analyses, I focused on a quarter of a mile walking around elementary schools, half a mile for intermediate and middle schools, and then one mile for high schools. These designations were suggested by the committee based on what they hear from parents and see students doing. Most parents don't want their six year old walking a mile to school now. And so we really narrowed those to what parents would be comfortable allowing their children to walk. So this network, you'll see those lines. Those are the streets where students and parents could walk in that area, that half mile area to and from that school. You might be able to see there are gaps in that, especially around that Francis Marion. There's a nice big gap there that's easy to see. But what was also helpful with this analysis is it showed that there are some gaps that service multiple schools. And that was a variable that played into the next round of analyses. Once we had all the different variables we wanted, example, one of them was the proximity to crash sites. That was provided by Hillary, a member on the on the group, in the group. Those were, we focused on pedestrian bike incidences with cars. We looked at the proximity to crosswalks. And then using twenty twenty census data, the number of children eighteen years and under that that sidewalk gap would service. And then coming from those overlaps of those walking zones, the number of schools that each gap would serve. And then whether or not that gap is in a low to moderate income area. Look, taking these variables, I performed a composite index analysis. Basically, what this does, it helps bring those variables together with the weights that we assign on our priorities. And it turns it into a simple value that we can help prioritize. The map that you see there is the result of that composite analysis showing highest to lowest priority, highest in purple, high in pink, medium in orange, and then the lowest in yellow. Now, we also did Lynnmar up in the north, but this area here showed all four of those categories, and so that's why you see it there. When we look at the the linear feet of each of those gap lines, we can split them out in those priority, highest to lowest. And then taking a hundred and ten feet per sidewalk foot from the engineering department, that includes one linear feet, four feet wide, kind of the middle ground for difficulty in installing that sidewalk. That includes, you know, site prep, removal, concrete, site restoration, things like that. The highest priority, six hundred and eighty thousand. Next, moving then to the high, which is five hundred and seven thousand, medium at four hundred and eighty nine thousand, and then lowest at four seventy two, sorry, five hundred and seventy two thousand. Total to fill in all of these gaps, two point two five million. So here's just kind of a breakdown of what those look like. I'm gonna try to zoom in. What? That's the dot there. How do I get it to do the zoom again? Hmm? Oh, it's not clicking. Oh, you have to click it through. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Oh, that's so much better. Thank you. So down here in the the southern part of Marion, around Vernon, Francis Marion, that's where we really see a lot of the highest priority, mostly due to their proximity to both crash sites and the number of schools that they would be serving. Our high priority, we have, again, there's a bunch down in the southern area around those schools. And then we also have a street near the Echo Hill and Hazel Point that doesn't have any sidewalks. They're completely absent up there. Oops, I just backed up. There we are. Our median priorities, I'll say most of the gaps are down here in the south. We see the median priorities there. And then we have the lowest. We do have some lowest priorities up here at Boulder. And then again, down in the southern area there. Now, I will say these sidewalk gaps do include public and private. And so, you know, the linear feet needing to be installed does include some of those private roads. And I understand there are some different challenges that come with those, and so that can always be altered as well. So our next step, really looking at this, is to really take these sidewalk gaps, integrating them into our CIP. Really, our goal is starting with that highest priority level for funding in twenty twenty seven. Kind of in alongside this is also that development of our sidewalk policy. And then finally, really, the next step is completing these sidewalk priorities. Once those are done, then reevaluating the remaining gaps for that next set of priorities. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions?
Is that Grant? I do. Thank you. First off, I have to applaud the analysis that has gone into this. You know, I was listening for something to quibble about, and it just does not exist. But I do, I did ask Rachel to include a slide to illustrate what is a persistent concern for me as the duly elected Ward Two representative. And so if, is that in this deck?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is in the Lynnmar district. And it's on North Indian Creek Road intersecting with Silver Creek Court. This is relatively close to my immediate neighborhood. And I wanted to point out a couple of things that has occurred over time. And I would just say, in recent weeks, I've received some commentary about the difficulty of elementary kids getting to Indian Creek School, which is not shown on this illustration. But it is immediately to the southwest off of this image. And so the principal concerns are the area in the red oval. You'll see the sidewalk termination at the southwest corner on the west side of Indian Creek Road. And anything to the north, there is no sidewalk in existence. Now, I expect that probably there is an engineering grade eye roll somewhere in the audience. But I, because I brought this up before, but I have been curious as to, well, there's a, there is a mowed trail around the periphery of the basin that exists there. And Brent, I've I've been real curious. I wondered if our guys were doing it, you know, I never could. Well, I finally met the gentleman who's doing that. I didn't have the presence of mind to ask, are you also gonna snow blow that? But a different topic at a later date. But you'll see that trail is indicated by the arrows there. And I thought this was evidence of fundamentally the neighborhood saying, we have a need to let our kids walk to Indian Creek School. Now, they have options. They can, they can go one or two blocks to the east and then south on Edgebrook, and then west again on Twenty Ninth to get to the intersection immediately adjacent to Indian Creek School. But that seems to kind of run counter to the walking distances that are in in your criteria. So all I guess, I'm, I wanted to get this on the record with an illustration to say this is a persistent concern that I think our neighborhoods in that area have. And I'm not sure what the solution is, but I did want to document this for everybody's awareness. So I'll take any questions anybody might have about that.
I have some.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sarah.
There's a little backup on this. I served on this group, along with the superintendents and transportation for both of the districts. And I get my groups mixed up, so I just want to make sure I'm remembering our original focus. But we started around the safe routes to school plans. That is why this is not in there. There's a whole bunch of gaps greater than these areas. But we specifically went to the Marion Independent Plan and where that, those gaps still existed from some of the earlier conversations. And then specifically, the Lynnmar Plan, which only includes the three buildings up Oak Ridge, Echo Hill, and Hazel Point. And then standing on its own Boulder Peak, because when the planning started, that was under construction. So it was requested that we start with a fresh area so we don't have to redo things later. It was like learn, like, as we plan this school, how do we need to plan the transportation around it while it's still a blank slate? And it's typically when you do a safe routes to school plan, you do it by building. You don't do it by district. And we probably led a a false narrative on how these plans work by starting with Marion. But it's so unique as the smallest geographic school district in the state that we were able to do every building within the Marion District. But that's not typically how you would plan it. So at Lynnmar's request, when we started this pre-COVID, it was just those three buildings as Boulder Peak was coming online over here by itself, and as Hazel Point was joining the Oak Ridge Echo Hill neighborhood, because that's a dead end street with three school buildings right near there and a developing neighborhood around it. So I agree with you, Grant. That is, the the area you pointed out is very much a need, as are the conversations we're having about where to cross on Twenty Ninth, because we've had the families in here and the other roads coming in. But this group, because it's so large, we started specifically with the two plans that are currently existing and analyzing those with the superintendents. and analyzing those with the superintendents and kind of figuring out where those sit as we move on. So I could get my groups mixed up, but originally, that's where we had started. It may have pivoted.
So I. Let's have Ryan make his comment in case it's pertinent to.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Menzer. Just kind of reversing back a little bit in time. One of the, one of the initiatives that we did was Dave Hockett, when he was here, we did the sidewalk gap analysis that council had asked for. And and so what what the team talked about was taking that information to see for outside of school and just creating some sort of comprehensive strategy to year over year work on addressing the sidewalk gaps throughout the community. And so as Councilwoman Menzer talked about with the safe route to school, like that becomes the highest priority. So this effort, we're looking for feedback from council on, does methodology work? We're trying to get a strategy, get some feedback from councils, so then we have some numbers to plug into the budget as we go through and start developing the capital improvement program with the realization that this would be an annual part of our budget process now. The sidewalk gaps and the prioritization. So for, we're looking for feedback to, does the methodology work? Do the priorities work? Is there other areas that that you'd like us to look at? We do have on the timelines and the next steps, one of the things that we heard about, especially when we were talking about the sidewalk over by Talby Park, is what happens if it's on private properties? What's the policy for the city going to follow? So we're going to be working on that policy in parallel with this in the budget process to come back and get some feedback. So we get clarity on that, so then we can continue to roll out that strategy.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think, you know, based on the analysis and maybe the going in assumptions with the Safe Routes to School initiative. You know, I think there were a lot of, just by virtue of age and population density and everything else in Southern Marion to fill in gaps. So that I get, and I have, as I said at the beginning, I have no issue with the approach to this analysis. I think in the area that I had just highlighted, I think that was built in the nineteen ninety eight or very early two thousands timeframe, something like that. And nobody was thinking about safe routes to school. And if we had that presence of mind at that time, maybe there would have been a design in and around perhaps that detention basin that would have allowed for a walkway or a path. So I'm just highlighting this from a standpoint of it's a lingering need. I don't know how we attack it. I would hope at some point Linmar puts that as a priority for their, for their safe routes to school plan. But I did just want to get it documented at this point that this is a problem and how we address it in the future, I think we will figure that out.
Councilman Harper, appreciate it. I think this right here is just, this is enough for staff to go ahead and take it and work it into our, our work plans as we look at this year over year over year.
Got it. Thank you.
Gage, and then back to Steve.
So what you were saying is for the FY twenty seven, staff would be recommending the highest priority category only in the budget. I guess what, obviously, it seems like the CIP is kind of the main funding source for these, for these safe route to school projects. But because it's safe route to school, do we have access or opportunity with other funding mechanisms to? Because my thought goes to, okay, if we're doing the highest priority in FY twenty seven, in FY twenty eight, does high priority become the highest priority? So we're only kind of repairing them as they get worse, or are there ways for us to be able to kind of attack some of these other categories and make those improve so that they don't get worse? And then we improve them.
Right.
Can we, can we, let's, let's tag team this one, because you'll talk about, go ahead and talk about the grants.
Okay.
And I'll add on.
Yes, so that is something that we talked about in our Safe Routes to School Committee about what are those? What do we feel we would get, that we would score high on? Some of those are definitely going to be those areas that have the crosswalks. So those are some things that we're going to take a look at, because we do, we do know that those would score well. What we need to find out is can we do, you know, one over here, one over here, one over here? Or does it have to be aligned from, so we've got a little bit of research that we need to do, but that is definitely going to be something that we will take a look at. The other thing that scores really well with the DOT for Safe Routes to Schools, also when you have a long. You may remember we were awarded for fifteenth last fall, I believe it was, and that is a long block section. We're just awaiting for the DOT to provide the acknowledgement and the steps that we need to go through to, to start working on that design and letting the project. But those are the kind of things that we'd be looking for, because it's very, it's a very competitive grant. But we do feel the crosswalk areas would be scored well.
And to add on, the clarity from council to staff on if this is acceptable. That gives us the direction we need to build the, build the CIP. And then as we get further along, finance is able to better align the funding for that. When council has their work session, their budget work session in January, council will be able to, again, take a look at this along with the other projects and say, can we do more? Do we have too much to do? So council will have the ability to to chime in again, based on the available funding that we know we have. But having it locked in a CIP definitely allows us to compete better for any available funding in that that's out there. So having the strategy and having it built into the CIP is a, is a win for our residents.
That makes sense. So will the new recommended sidewalk policy draft, so will that come into play before we get into actual budget season then too? So.
That, that is the goal. Yes.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay. Did we go back to you yet?
Not yet.
Okay. So Steve, and then back to Sarah.
So Rachel, I just want to make sure, number one, it's not surprising that the majority of the need is in the Marion School District, since that's the older part of the city. So I want to make sure I'm clear on how you designate priority based upon the first slide you had up there on the types of sidewalks. So if I've got a sidewalk on this left hand side, and it's, say, a six block area, but it's just missing one block, but there's no sidewalk on the other side, you're going to make that one block the highest, a high priority in order so that you have a continuous sidewalk somewhere. Is that correct?
We didn't take sidewalk status as far as like how we categorize it. That wasn't a variable that was included in the analysis. It wasn't one that the group decided was terribly important. But it's something that, as Kim was mentioning, there's different variables in the grant process that we might be looking at areas where we can do that long stretch if we think that that will get us, if the application will be more successful. But there's lots of different ways to look at it, you know, it could be, you know, this block will be complete with just ten feet of sidewalk. You know, that's one of those, maybe it's a focus on where can we get those easy wins? It might be a focus on where can we get the best application success? So that's something for the group.
I'm just trying to make sure we're not trying to get sidewalks everywhere in the city on both sides of the street.
Yeah, and that's.
Because that, to me, is never going to happen.
Well, and that's, that's why I changed what I consider to be a complete sidewalk is different than what engineering. Engineering's definition is both sides of the street fully sidewalked. With this, the priority was to get the, find the least walkable areas. And that's where there is no side of the street with a full stretch of sidewalk.
And and to, just one thing for all of us. We're talking about safe routes to school. It's going to morph into just sidewalk, our sidewalk program. And and it's how do we make those dollars go further? And how do we prioritize those? So that's certainly going to be part of, you know, council's deliberations as we continue on with this as part of the budget process. But yeah, the the focus right now is to complete the sidewalks, at least on one side of the street. That's, that becomes the highest priority for us.
I agree with that. One other question, on the, on the map with Linmar, you got the section in yellow, and I know it's the lowest priority. But there's a section in yellow just southwest of Boulder Peak. And my question on that is, that's a newer area of development in our city. Why isn't there sidewalk, wouldn't we have mandated sidewalk in a newer development area like that? I do not understand that section being excluded from not having any sidewalk in a newer part of the city.
Okay, go ahead.
That is Smithland Drive, and it was an annexed street into.
It was a county subdivision.
It was a county subdivision.
That was a county subdivision?
And it's part of a group that we're right now in the process of discussing. We have been for, oh, seven years?
Okay.
Getting them up to speed on their road that they would like redone and whether or not it will hook into Williams. There's a whole conversation around that piece. So it is a, it was an annexed in road that doesn't, that's why.
And and Councilwoman Menzer has been running point for Team Marion on that, along with Mike Barkalow and the Public Works Team. Just since we're on that, that is something that engineering is looking at, coming up with designs for, to submit as a CIP project. And we're also working on a, a policy for council consideration. It's not primed yet to how to deal with those kinds of subdivisions that have been annexed in, and how do we handle requests like that?
Questions and a comment. Ryan, you kind of hit on what I was going to ask or talk about was, Gage talked about, you know, hitting her high priorities, and then do we do the next set of priorities? But there's high priorities outside of safe route to schools in the town that need to be addressed. And I can think of one right by my house that I talk about all the time. That is high priority in my mind. So that was my comment that I was going to bring up, but you kind of hit on it. That is going to morph into the whole city versus just safe routes outside of the back. But will the sidewalk advisory committee being started back up to work on sidewalks after we kind of get out of just focusing on safe routes to school?
Is that a council discussion we can have? I mean, we can bring that back at a future date for discussion and and direction.
Because it didn't get taken away. It's just on hiatus, correct? It's still technically around.
I mean, we didn't have bylaws, so it's just kind of an ad hoc committee. So I mean, it had, at least it had a representative from each school, it had two residents, and then you were on it as the council representative and then staff.
Just curious of how that's going to go in the future when it comes to outside of safe routes.
And and what we can, what we can do is, at the end of the day, the most important thing for staff is what's the dollar plug for the CIP? Because then we can work with council on, I mean, this is, this is a baseline, like, here's our strategy, starting with the safe routes to school. Let's address our most, you know, our children first. And then kind of create that that safe environment. The, we can, we could always pivot based on council feedback on where, where in the community. But this, at least this is a start, a recommendation for council to give us feedback. So, so there's something to, to reflect on.
Go ahead.
To your point, Gage, sorry, this, this is like twelve years of my life. So if I, if I digress, I feel like it's just a overload, it's just an overload of all this stuff in my head coming in. But I think that the other, the piece of this and part of the discussion with the safe routes, not only was it because it was already kind of a studied group, and we have members of, with the CNPO, we have, then County Public Health, like, are involved in those conversations when we were looking at this. But then also, if you are applying for the funding, you have to have a, an approved safe routes to school plan. Maybe we can't just call it, it's a safe route to school. So it has to be an adopted council, adopted school district, to even being applying to those funds. So having them come forward and do, Marion's, the complete district is almost done. So that's always there as a, as a way for us to reference it. Linmar is the one that is still piece that has a lot of gaps, even though it's already, probably has more sidewalks than what we faced when we did the Marion Plan. So that was one of them. Two, maybe you covered this before I came back in, I'm sorry I took a call. Transportation for Marion Independent, also like we looked at bus stop, who's looking at bus stops? And can people walk to there? And where are those pieces? And how do the kids get to that? I mean, it was greater than the walking piece of it. So it's pretty in depth with how we get there. But I agree, there's gaps all over the community, and I don't think, unfortunately, we're never going to have it be perfect. When we did safe routes for Marion, I mean, in my head envisioned, would it be great if it was like Marion Independent School District was a campus and the city kind of was on it, and you had all these sidewalks walking from building to building, and there's happened to be houses? But it's like, well, no, we have areas that you can't even get a sidewalk in because of the, where the houses are and the road is. There's a lot of, trying to, I think, pick off the easier ones that make consistent ways that people can move within the neighborhoods without these gaps that they're running into, or crossing the road and not having a sidewalk on the other side. I mean, it really, I really encourage anyone to just really walk around some of these neighborhoods and walk around some of the schools, because I thought I knew it until I started figuring out what these kids are facing, and they, they'll do the cattle path. I mean, we watch them. If they can't get there, they're going to make a cattle path to go the way that they can do it. And that's why the one route, that's why there's a sidewalk over here, because we watch them cattle path through that neighborhood routinely every day after school. So that's kind of the, I guess, where we go next. And it's unfortunate that there isn't these huge sums of money, because we all see the gaps that need to occur. And Grant, to your point, I was by Indian Creek the other morning before school. And I was pleasantly surprised and very happy to see a whole, it was kids on bikes as far as you could see and stopping and waiting to cross, and a few parents walking. And I just thought to myself, look at all these active kids coming into school on their bikes, and this is what we wanted. So it was a, it was kind of a happy thing, but they were all on Twenty Ninth. They weren't coming down Indian Creek, to your point.
Yes, Ryan.
Mayor, I'm sorry, one more point. When we do bring back the draft policy, my guess is that we will also have some level of, it, it's going to require some sort of feedback from council, because if you, when we were going through the sidewalk analysis, there are areas in town where we have, correct me if the, the proper terminology, waivers in place where the, the development deferred the requirement. So we do have that in the toolbox as well, where we can, we can require them to put those in based on those waivers and the commitments there. So that will take, that will take care of some other gaps. But that's going to be something that we will, as we're having the policy discussions with council, be looking for feedback on, on what is the tempo we want to, we want to pursue on, on requiring those, those, those waivers to be installed.
I thought we've had that discussion on, on the deferred sidewalks in, in, where subdivisions were put in, and we deferred some of the sidewalks. I thought we've, we kind of made that policy decision of asking that those be done. I think we've had that discussion.
Yeah, based on, based on how old the subdivisions were, we've done that, yeah.
So we might go back and check, but I think we've, I recall we've had that discussion on the deferred sidewalks that we want those built, we want those put in.
It was, it was part of the overall conversation when we did the gap analysis. We identified that they are available, and we talked about going through and developing the strategy and then having the policy. Because the, the other question that came up with the policy question was, who's going to be, who's going to, when we have those, when we have the gaps, we have, there, there's different tiers. So we have the gaps, some of them are public requirements, some of them are going to be the waivers, and then some of them are, those gaps are just purely on private. And we didn't have that policy. So that's the policy that we're working on. So then when we bring that back, this is, this entirety is going to be a complete picture. So we'll have all aspects to then get that clarity and then get the green light to go forward.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor.
Yes.
One, so when it comes to new subdivisions, you are correct that once a final plat has been approved by city council, if a lot has not pulled a building, building permit within five years, then they are required to put in that sidewalk. So that's how we handle the new subdivisions.
Okay, that's the discussion we had?
It, yeah, it was a handful of years ago, and that has been in place.
Okay. All right. Thank you for all your work on it. This is the most detailed that we've ever got talked about sidewalks. And but, but also the most detailed analysis that we've received and the, the numbers and all of that. The big, the, the big picture, the overall picture of what we're dealing with. So thank you for all the work. The big, the big picture, the overall picture of what we're dealing with. So thank you for all the work. Okay. Next, we have Nicole. Is that correct? Yes. Comprehensive plan.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and City Council. So we wanted to provide a high-level overview of our current activities and identified priorities for the city as it pertains to the Marion 2045 Plan. So we have, we have been working on this document already since the adoption in March. As part of this presentation, we'll also dive into more of the planning division specifically, providing more detail on what we've been up to, as well as what our short-term and medium-term priorities are. And we would like confirmation from City Council direction on if, if we're aligned with what your vision is for the division. So starting with our guiding principles, there are 10 Iowa Smart Planning Principles. Within the state code, our Marion 2045 document does include these Iowa Planning Principles as well. They are the foundation of the plan, they are the foundation of the goals and strategies that were developed within the plan, and they do touch all different sections that we have within the document. Starting with the ongoing efforts, these are things that will happen throughout the life of this document. One of those being the annexation strategy. So as annexation requests come in, we will analyze them, making sure that, before they are brought forward to City Council to take action on, that we're looking at, does it make sense within the city, does it make sense with our Marion 2045 comp plan? Is it in that near-term annexation area, or is it in the kind of longer-term, 10-year-plus area? Once we've determined that, nope, it is more within that shorter-term area, we'll make sure that we're not doing that leapfrog development, making sure we're abiding by those planning principles. Then citywide departmental coordination, something Team Marion has been working on a lot, is just making sure that we're having our efforts coordinated throughout the various departments. Other ongoing efforts, as you can see, kind of in that brighter blue, those are the different sections that these items touch throughout the document. There's a lot of work that goes on with these, especially working as a team with our partners, like Medco, the Chamber for Encouraging, like, those housing, mixes of housing business types, not only land use in neighborhoods, but we're also getting those partners of ours working together on that. And then as Rachel was talking about, with creating and maintaining self-and-well-connected multimodal networks in the mobility section, so safe routes to school, sidewalk gaps, that is a part of that. So as you can see, these are ongoing efforts that we've been working on as a team, even before the adoption of this, and will continue working on as a team throughout the life of it. For short-term priorities, kind of citywide, and focus being that growing our centers for economics base, again, working with the Chamber, Medco, our city partners with that, and then making sure that we're utilizing those adopted plans. So reforestation, wayfinding, the safe routes to school, stormwater management. We've seen some presentations on a few of those tonight already. They're just making sure that, yeah, we're going through implementing those, making sure they're top of mind as we go through that budget season. Medium term, this one kind of focuses more on our facilities. It's making sure that as our community grows, we're wanting to make sure we're able to serve them in the needs of that growing commu, community. So it's making sure we've got enough space for different departments. It's also making sure that our city services are equipped for the capacity that they need to be at. Going into the planning division, as mentioned, these strategies are things that we've heard council say that they want us to be looking into, so they are on our short end, say, more short-term priority list. Again, we are looking for that direction from you tonight to make sure that what we're thinking is the priority does align with what you want us to be working on. So starting off, though, with what we've accomplished so far since March, is that moratorium. We've enhanced those existing design standards, we've made sure that we've got added regulations specific to the gas stations along Tower Terrace Road, and then we've updated sign regulations. For short-term, we're looking at subarea plans and code amendments. So for subarea plans, again, these cover land use, centers and corridors, mobility, neighborhoods, parks and trails. So it covers a wide range of our sections within the comp plan. Our first one there being Seventh Avenue from 12th to 22nd Street. That is a priority for not only engineering, but the city as a whole, as one of those major corridors. So that would be kind of our top sub-area planning effort that we see, along with east of Highway 13 between the Grantwood Trail and Seacrest Road. So that's kind of just south there of the Marion Enterprise Center. And then Tower Terrace Road, west of El Burnett Road, so just north of the Tower Terrace Road area, like, we've had many discussions on during the comp planned, comp plan meetings. And then Mean Year Road to Highway 100. Then for code amendment updates, again, things that we've heard from council are ways to encourage that housing variety. And then updating, updates to our historic preservation chapter, that's making sure that we're keeping that in mind as we go through the different elements of this plan, and then making sure any state legislation, local vision, or changes for clarity are being brought forward as needed. I'm gonna pause here before I move on to the medium priorities. Thoughts on staff's list for our short-term priorities?
Okay. Questions?
No questions, really, just stating that I really appreciate these short-term priorities. Obviously, Mean Year Road to Highway 100 would be very important still in the next couple of years. And I do appreciate, after all the discussion we've had, that housing variety is, is in there as well. I think that'll be really important as, as we go forward in all these different areas, so just wanted to say that, and I appreciate these priorities.
Go ahead.
Nicole, I'm not sure if this is for you or perhaps for Mike, but the Seventh Avenue from 12th to 22nd Street, how does this prioritization in the next 24 months interface with funding acquisition that we might be getting for that? And I'm gonna say through the MPO, possibly. Where does that all land?
Yeah, so we have STBG funding. If you recall, we delayed it one year so we could get an extra million dollars for that project. It's fiscal, federal fiscal year '27, and it's the, I believe theirs starts in September, October, instead of July like ours.
Okay. All right, so this all works well?
Yeah, that is, that is one of the reasons, that's just an additional reason as to why this is one of the top priorities for subplan.
Okay, great, thanks.
So what about Highway 151 east of 13? Is that a priority in terms of subarea planning for the, for commercial along there?
For, that, that's, that's the direction we're, we're looking for. So if that's something that council would like to include on that list, what we would do as staff is take the feedback from council and then work on the necessary resources to include as part of the budget. So this, this guidance would help us determine how much money we need to incorporate into the upcoming fiscal year, so that come July 1, we have the funding, the resources to effectuate. So if there's something that.
I just see, like, the city quickly going out that way, and if we want to have some semblance of order in terms of how it develops, or have some pre-planning of how it shapes out to be, especially the commercial areas along the highway. I don't know, to me, that's like, that was one of the things that, one of the motivating factors for going through the update, was, that was one of them, was 151 east of 13.
It, it's, it's, I mean, we can, we can certainly, if council agrees, we can certainly put that on there. It will all depend on the available funding, you know, what we can afford. And then, just like with the sidewalks, this would become a prioritization for council during the budget work session.
Is anybody that disagrees with that, that, like, because one, one was Highway 13, and, and things are developing up there, maybe not in the ideal way. And so we wanted to get that under some control, and then, but the same thing could happen on 151, going east.
Mayor?
Yes.
Are you talking east of East Town Crossing?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking, isn't there already a subarea plan for out there?
So, yeah, I was gonna ask for clarity on this, if you were talking about the north side or the south side of the highway there. We do have the East Marion Subarea Plan that does include what Chad Pili is doing. Yep, Rockwood area and Rockwood East area. It does extend all the way out to Hinman Road.
It goes all the way to Hinman?
Correct, yeah.
But not on the south side?
Correct.
I guess what's.
Both sides matter, I don't know.
What's the area then, east of Highway 13 between Grantwood Trail and Seacrest Road? Is that not south of 151? I guess I must misunderstood where that area was.
So Seacrest Road, that'd be Highway 100 on the east side.
Oh, south of Medco.
Mm-hmm, south of, south of Medco.
Thank you.
And then on the code amendment updates, I appreciate all those up there. Is there anything that needs to be done for large, the large lot subdivisions? Or is that just, has that already been taken care of, do you think, enough with our code amendments?
I think any further discussion on that would be folded into that, the encouraging of housing variety and different means of going about that.
Okay. All right, those are the things that I thought about. Okay, we'll go with Stephen and Will.
Yeah, I'd suggest, you know, if, if we want to continue to expand the sub-area planning, and that becomes a longer list, I would, I would probably recommend that we figure out how much of that we can bite off and do in a, in a, in the appropriate manner with, with staff as well as funding. And so if we want to add anything to that, maybe we need to prioritize those sub-area planning sections on which ones we think are the most important. So if we add more, maybe we need to prioritize so that we know what staff should be focusing on.
And we can, Will, we will be able to do that and have that prepared for the discussion in January.
Well?
Maybe it's coming up on the medium or long range, or maybe it's not even part of this, but my thought was the housing plan for that section of town by the Parkview area, I don't know if that would be, anything that has to do with code amendments or anything that has to do with, not necessarily a sub-area plan, but is that included in any of this, or is that not?
If we're ready, we can move on to the medium-term priorities. I know Will's ready.
Greg might, Greg might have one, one more thing.
I do, just, I'm trying to get a fix in my own mind relative to the content of a sub-area plan. And so is the document that was prepared, the village at Indian Creek, going from Cornhenge East along the intended Tower Terrace Corridor, is that an example of a sub-area plan?
Yes, the neighborhood at Indian Creek is an example of a sub-area plan. There's kind of two parts to that one. The first one was that more general sub-area plan, whereas the updated one in 2019 really focused on the PUD aspect, putting regulations to it.
I was just searching for an example to benchmark my thinking, thanks.
I think that was it, so proceed.
Medium-term priorities. So the neighborhood reinvestment area, exploring and creating the acquisition rehab resale program to encourage that reinvestment. We are looking more on that south side of Marion, kind of in that Parkview area or other areas in that Marion Independent School District. So that would be a part of kind of that medium-term priority. Along with then code amendments, again, just making sure we're keeping up with the state legislation, local vision, and changes for clarity. And then we've got the redevelopment of that Seventh Avenue to 12th, 22nd Street corridor. So it's then going into and making sure we're implementing that sub-area plan accordingly.
Comments? Go ahead, Will.
My comment would be that I saw the neighborhood reinvestment more of the zero-to-two-year timeframe priority. Because it was, it's been a few years since we've started talking about that, and I don't think it's moved along very far yet.
We actually had this conversation at our economic development team meeting this morning. We're gonna have, the ARPA funding is gonna be completed through ECI COG soon, and we'll put, we'll have a wrap-up meeting, a presentation for council. We don't have a timetable set for that yet. One of the, the things that we were talking about is to, to kind of, because that, that's gonna be a significant lift. And we've got with the upcoming community survey, and then from that, if you recall, what we did, we, we changed the, the timing of the strategic planning process to, to coincide with the seating of a new city council. And so that was one of those items that we wanted to incorporate as part of the strategic planning process, because it is so large that we could kind of have some, have some time with council to kind of really define it a little bit better, to then kind of lay out something that's gonna be sustainable and not overwhelming for the resources and for the community. So we can certainly look at moving that up, but trying to, trying to slot a process so we can make sure that it is meaningful, and it's, there's, there's some strategy behind it, and we, it's, it's a program that can, it can be funded and it can be self-sustaining.
I would comment that, the fact that you said that it is a big lift, because it is a big project, that maybe it is incorporated into the, kind of both, I mean, in a zero-to-five-year timeframe type of thing, instead of just two to five years out.
Yeah, and, and please know that even though it's listed here as two to five years, there's still groundwork that is being done. Kim and our partners at Medco, ECI COG, they're still working on, on that very topic. So there is, there is research, there are discussions, there's data gathering that's, that's taking place today that staff's working on.
Okay.
Otherways, yeah, just wanted, again, to provide you with the summary and overview of our Marion 2045 comp plan, and how we have been already moving forward with some of those actionable items within the document. We've kind of affirmed planning divisions, direction over the next five years, and then also have future presentations by other departments. This will be done on an annual basis by the departments to make sure that we're held accountable for implementing the adopted plan.
Okay, any other questions for Nicole? Thank you for the update.
And just to tie a little bow on that, we're gonna take the feedback that we got today. Staff's gonna do the research prep and have that, have that stuff ready for budget discussions in January.
Okay. That brings us to the, excuse me, to the agenda review. We'll take the first items that are marked A6, 7, and 8 on page four. Leanne?
I marked these for discussion simply because we don't do urban renewal plan amendments all that often. So I would want to see if City Council had any questions. Just a reminder, an urban renewal plan amendment is the beginning of the tax increment finance process. You have to include any project in the urban renewal plan. You have to include any project in the urban renewal plan. And then once it's included in the plan, a debt instrument of some sort or obligation in the form of either an internal loan, general obligation bond or development agreement would actually follow. So that's the part where you're actually obligating dollars. This is simply just adding to the plan. For central quarter, we have three projects, the McGrath Volkswagen Expansion Project off Blair's Ferry Road, former library site development, and then an update to our administration and professional support program extending the life of that through twenty thirty. Just a reminder that administration and professional support program is the means for which we pay Medco, reimburse ourselves for legal costs and for some staff time related to economic development activities and then also the contribution to Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance, just some examples. Any questions?
Gage.
So with, when you're setting the public hearing with this, obviously I'm thinking more specifically about the library side development. When you set that public hearing, you're just setting what the, the max of the TIF funding can be and when the actual development agreement comes later, right? But it might not necessarily be, it's obviously not at that.
Correct, and we included it in this to save legal costs. Obviously, we are still working on negotiations with the developer on that one.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll actually be talking about that very item with the council later this week.
Okay.
So this is similar. These are urban renewal plan amendments for West Tower Terrace Road and Echo Hill Road. This is just the administration and professional support program. And then this last one is a resolution setting a date for public hearing for the agreement with Five Thirty Investments LLC, including tax increment finance. This is that last item, at least on finances plate, related to the closure of the airport. So this is an agreement with Five Thirty Investments to provide property tax relief to both them and their FBO. And you can see the maximum incentive that we have already negotiated. We have a draft agreement is ninety-three thousand seven sixty-four. Questions?
Any questions for Leanne? Okay. Thanks, Leanne. Next item is on the next page, E three, Nicole.
Good evening again. So the applicant at sixteen twenty-five Seventh Avenue is seeking to redo the facade of the building. It's the senior health insurance there on Seventh Avenue. The property is zoned uptown two, so because of it being within our central corridor zoning districts, we are going through the central corridor review process. That includes review by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. There we go, laser pointer. So we are specifically looking at that rear building tonight, not the one that's directly adjacent to Seventh Avenue, but the one that sits next to Sixteenth Street. Looking at the central corridor review for this, in that top left corner, that is the existing building on the exterior. Currently, they are in the process of remodeling the interior of that building into some office spaces. They found out about this review process as they applied for those building permits. And we informed them that they can move forward with that interior work and we would just put a hold on their exterior project. So that is what we have done. Like I said, if you see construction happening up there, they are in the process of creating some new office spaces. So looking at the building form, as you can see, we've got a pretty standard refine there. They are looking at adding additional gables on the front of Sixteenth Street as well as bumping out the vestibule. They're about eight feet towards Sixteenth Street. That does give a little more dimension to the front face of that structure. Regarding building height, pedestrian scale, and even parking, none of that is being changed with this request. For the architectural style of this, as you can see that they currently have horizontal siding. They are proposing to keep that horizontal siding look. There is an existing kind of dock door there on the right side as well as another dock-style door in between a pedestrian, with a pedestrian door in the middle. That door does lead into a storage area that will be kept with this remodel. With the new changes, those two dock doors become new windows on that south side of the front southern end of that building. They're also taking the existing windows and most of them will be shifted just slightly, just to align with those newly instructed office spaces within there as well as enlarging them. And then on the south side here, I don't have an existing photo, but this middle window will be a new addition and that will provide some light into that walkway leading to those office spaces. So they are looking at changing out again that current material for some stonework in those kind of gray-brown tone hues that are variegated along with horizontal siding, architectural steel panels. There are five-inch by twelve-foot panel that's kind of a flat seam finish in that kind of dark black charcoal color. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve the facade alterations for this project, six to zero, at their meeting a couple of weeks ago, or last week, last Tuesday. Questions of staff on this one?
Okay, questions? You look like you have something to say.
No, I mean, so they're going from the white siding to the dark. Correct. And then, but the door thing isn't, that's not part of it, that's the house, right? And then signage, like where's the, where's their business sign in all of this?
On Seventh?
So they currently have a sign right here in between those two windows. We have not seen any updated signage for this side of the building. They do have signage, I believe, on that Seventh Avenue side, but we have not been provided any updated signage for this side of the building. Because does this fall into the sign ordinance updates we'll have that are curvy, swirly, not basic signs? Yes, any commercial sign within the city of Marion does have to follow those sign regulations within our code. And that's enough, it's kind of hard. I think what I was struggling with is I'm like, where's the difference in facade? And I know it's got to be that brick underneath, but I think it's kind of lost in the bushes that are drawn in front of it. Is that what I'm, why I'm not really seeing it? Yeah, that does make it kind of hard. Okay, okay, so it's kind of blending in.
I think that rendering is, is difficult to visualize what it's going to look like, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'm sure it's a major improvement. Okay. Anyone else? All right, Nicole, you have the next two.
I do.
On E, on page six, E one and E two.
So this is a request from the applicant of, or from the owner of sixty-four oh seven Partners Avenue. He is wanting to waive a very specific section within the Marion Enterprise Center Design Guidelines document. That document was adopted by city council along with that planned unit development zoning district. So this request for waiver does not impact any of our other city codes or planned unit development regulations. It is solely for this property and this property only. So they are requesting to have waived, like I said, a very specific portion. It would be to allow an overhead door on the front of the building. So on here, it'd be that kind of red line right there on the building. That is where they are wanting to place an overhead door within this document that's been adopted. The requirement says that overhead doors for service and loading must be placed on the sides or the rear of a building. The applicant does have a client that they have certain needs and one of those needs is to have an overhead door on the front of it. The Medco group is aware of this project and of this request and they are in support of waiving this code requirement for the requister.
Medco group being Medco Holdings, the LLC?
Yes, it is my understanding that both Medco staff and then Medco Holdings have both reviewed this.
Okay. You ready for questions?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, I thought I saw an illustration of what that door would look like, current versus additional.
Yes, that is the next item on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
When we start looking at the facade, this is purely based off of the waiver.
Okay, okay, so maybe we should go to the next item and then discuss them together. Does that make sense or not?
If that's how you want me to do it, I can do it.
Let's do that.
Okay. So sixty-four oh seven Partners Avenue, still talking about that same property there. They are in tier two of the Marion Enterprise Center. As you can see, it's kind of that back area along Partners Avenue. So this is the building site itself. The client that is interested in this building does have special needs, like I said, for an overhead door as part of that. It does include a security fence that would encompass a portion of the front of the building as well as the rear of the building. So when looking at that overhead door space, it would be kind of on that western front corner of the building. It's a ten-foot wide overhead door, fourteen feet tall. With this overhead door in place, it would remove two parking stalls that are currently in existence. Based on the proposed client and their needs, they would still meet those parking requirements set by the code. So this, as you were mentioning, that we've got the existing elevation on the top with the proposed elevation on the bottom here of the screen. So currently, the facade on that corner matches all the way down the building. On the lower one, it's got that ten-foot wide overhead door that's fourteen feet tall. They are showing that door to be in a black color. They felt that that black did accent the black material used around kind of the rest of the windows on the, on the building. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend this facade alteration at six to zero.
Okay. Now questions, comments?
It was a night test for me, though.
Okay. Anyone have concerns about this? Okay, thank you. Now we'll go back to the, to the agenda as a whole. Any, is there any questions on anything, any item that was not marked for discussion? Anyone have questions on any item that wasn't marked? Go ahead.
Yes, I'm, I'm looking at the final section, E, Community Development, E one, in our continued work on readings for ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-six regarding the airport land use and height overlay requirements. So I just, what I want to just try to summarize is the current version that is part of our work session packet and will be before us on Thursday, I think that's redlined, has redline edits in it. Does, does that current version represent the composite input from our consulting partners as well as incorporates responsiveness to our residents' concerns relative to that ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, so this is, so, so the redline edits really sweep everything together into one basket.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's just what I wanted to confirm. I, I've read through that. I do have some very minor editorial comments for consideration and I will tender those off here soon. Okay, thanks.
Any other items on the agenda that anyone would like to discuss? That weren't marked? Okay, then that brings us to the closed session.
Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa, and this is two separate matters.
Second.
We moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under the Code of Iowa. Maybe have the legal counsel's statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five one C.
Okay, any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mayor Ablosley?
Yes.
Ms. Menzer?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sternhead?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us for adjourned to closed session.